We call the main order. We have everybody here tonight. Additions to the agenda, they all got that in the packet. Business items and three personnel items. We have a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Deb. Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. District 741 is proud of Gary and Lou Ann Rieck for their $150 donation to first and second grade teachers to be used for supplies. Then we are on public comment. Anybody here for a public comment?
If there's nobody here then I'd like to respond to the public comments. That's the last board meeting. Make sure that there's somebody here. At the last board meeting there was concern about moving the fifth grade to three sections. Okay? After listening to the community concerns and reevaluating the situation, we will be leaving the fifth grade at three sections. And I want the community to know that we'll be closely monitoring the situation throughout the school year. I guess that's our response to the concerns.
Next, approve and correct minutes from the July 15th, 2014 regular board meeting and the July 28th, 2014 special board meeting. The special board meeting minutes were in the packet. I'll make a motion to approve. A motion by David.
Second.
A second by Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. And next is the consent agenda.
One thing I would like to mention, number one, under B, Jazz Band says additions for the show should be just lining it out. That should not have been there. We missed putting it on there. That was added halfway through last year. So technically, it's not an addition for this year. We started halfway through last year.
And a couple of them there that are empty now, we kind of...
The ones that are empty, we just don't have anybody right now that will fill those slots. We will sooner or later come back hopefully to the board with names for those open slots.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the non-athletic assignments for 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay, second by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Okay. Business items, just a reminder that we have a series of business items. We do have public comment for every business item. I guess if you have comments that you want to make from the public, just raise your hand or something if we miss you. First, we will review and consider approval of Facilities Bond Project A not to exceed $2,030,000 and a capital project levy at $240,000 per year for 10 years.
In Exhibit 8, it just has a list of all the things that we have talked about with the facilities committee and I've shown the board before. We just want to approve those. The numbers are all just because numbers could go up and down. So it's really the total amount that I'm looking for a motion to approve is just for the $2,030,000 in the bonds and the $240,000 for 10-year levy, capital levy.
I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
I have a second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Any public input? Saying none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Number two, review and consider approval of the review and comment document we will be submitting to MDE for the facilities project.
There is a statement in the components of the required cover letter and review and comment document. In the cover letter, what they're looking for is a statement that the school board has approved, the review and comment document, that it's being submitted to the Commissioner of Education. The review and comment document is with you at this time or it's added in your packet. So that's what we're looking for is just a statement to that intent that you reviewed it and you're approving it.
I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
I have a second by Kala. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Saying none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Number three, review and consider approval of resolution calling an election to authorize the issuance of school building bonds and to approve a capital project levy.
If you look through that particular packet and Exhibit C, it does go through and it talks about what the resolution is, but also if you go to a little bit further on, it also has the two questions that would be on the ballot. So by doing this resolution, you're also approving the two questions and those are the two questions that would be there. And you can take a look at question number one. It's very thorough. It does talk about virtually everything that we had had in question one, including the capital technology levy that we'd be looking for. And question number two is for the Community Center Gym Project, which would be not to exceed $7,800,000. And the passing of that question is dependent upon the first question passing. You can certainly take a look. And then also attached to that particular piece of packet, we have dollars here today and I'll turn it over to them in a second with the costing sheets for the project. Okay, would anyone else want to introduce themselves and then board can ask any questions after they have walked?
So I'm Joey Seswa. I've been here a few other times. Greg Pro is also with me tonight and...
Would you guys mind could...
If you can, if the mic gets up otherwise they won't pick up.
We have our Facebook people that tune into us all the time and we have to make sure they can hear also.
Absolutely, yep. So again, I'm Joey Seswa and this is Greg Pro. And we worked with Tom Beams, URBond Council, on preparing the resolution and the ballot language. And we were very careful about making sure that that first question included all of the items that were in your Project A as well as the capital project levy information. And then as Bob mentioned, the question two, then, the Community Center Gymnasium Project and an amount not to exceed 7.8 million. So the tax impact that was included with the resolution includes all of the components of the questions. The review and comment document includes the projects that are required to be submitted to the Department for Approval. So the two bond issues need to be included in that review and comment document. The capital project levy is not subject to the review and comment process. So you'll notice a difference between the tax impact schedules in the review and comment and the one that you will be using as part of your referendum going into the vote this November. The difference between the two schedules is simply that capital project levy. So in the review and comment document that goes to the state, the total estimated tax rate increase shows up as 6.13 percent because that's the tax impact of the two bond issue components of the question that you're presenting to the voters. With respect to the total tax impact that you want to publish and provide to your community, you will also see the capital project levy tax impact at 3.27 percent. So the total tax rate increase is the 9.4 percent. And you can see on the tax impact chart then, the impact on various values of homes, commercial industrial properties, ag homestead, ag non-homestead, seasonal rec and non-homestead residential all fall into that last category. We really encourage any ag property owners to call us or email us or contact us because their tax calculations are very complicated. And so in order to get a more precise estimate, we like to get their property tax ID numbers and that way we can calculate the impact, we can calculate a customized tax impact for them. We will be putting together a property tax website similar to what you used for your operating referendum a couple of years ago. And as part of that website, you will have our 800 number, we'll have our email address so they can contact us and again, we can get a precise calculation for them. The tax calculator on your property tax website will work very well for your residential homeowners and they can put in their estimated market value and see right away what the impact of question one, question two, and if both questions pass, what the total impact will be. But again, for ag homeowners, ag property owners, we really encourage them to call us or contact us so that we can get them a precise estimate. It varies so much and it's a complicated calculation. And we'll have the website up and running, I would say, by, we usually try to have it up and running about eight weeks prior to the election. So by the end of, by the end of this month for sure, we'll have that. And we'll make sure that Bob and Joan take a look at that and are comfortable with it before we give it to you guys to have it up and running. And it'll be a link on your website. So just like with the operating referendum, your community members or taxpayers can click on that link on your website, take a look at the information and take a look at the tax impact.
Joey, could you go over a little bit about the difference between, because we had the referendum and certainly did that, but there is a difference on what properties are taxed for a bond, this type of level. So if you could explain that?
Yep. So on the operating referendum, the way that the taxes work for that, $100,000 homeowner, $100,000 commercial property taxpayer, both paid at the same rate. Seasonal rec did not pay, do not pay anything on an operating referendum. Also, on an operating referendum, the ag are taxed on the house garage and one acre. With respect to this type of question, questions that you're presenting to the voters, you'll see there's a varying tax impact. So for example, $100,000 homeowner, the total tax impact we're showing here at $67 if both questions pass. If you look at $100,000 commercial property, it's $141. So the tax impact varies quite a bit between the different kinds of properties on this type of referendum. And you'll notice that your seasonal rec property owners do pay toward this type of referendum, a capital referendum. Again, on an operating referendum, they didn't, they aren't paying anything toward the operating referendum. So it's a broader tax base with different tax rates. And that's why on the property tax website, you'll see that the homeowners can put in their value and we can calculate that for them right off the bat. The other kinds of taxpayers will want them to contact us to get a calculation, especially the ag, ag taxpayers.
And that's accurate with the capital levy also? Same thing?
Yes, absolutely. Capital levy is the same tax base and tax rates as your bond referendums.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
The bond issue and the capital levy, obviously the capital levy is over 10 years. The bond issue is amortizing 10 years, too, correct?
If question one passes, we have it set up right now to have a 10-year payback. If both questions pass, we have it set up for a 15-year.
So then everything will move to a 15-year?
That's correct.
Okay, so I saw that and I knew the second was a 15-year.
But the capital levy would not, that would be in 10.
That's correct. That's the maximum that you're allowed to ask the voters to approve.
So at the end of the 10th year then...
The capital levy would...
Would disappear and their taxes would be reduced by that amount?
Correct.
Unless they were to renew a levy.
And you can ask for a renewal of a capital project levy, just like you would with an operating referendum levy. And many districts who have had them in place for a while are now renewing their capital project levy. So you know, the board will have the opportunity to consider that again at the end of the 10-year timeframe, should this question pass or fall.
Now, can you tell me the non-homesteading residential rental property, what is that called?
Same as the seasonal recreational residential. So that bottom category there, Lou, is the category that if your, if your property isn't homesteaded, that's the same category that you fall into.
But it's an incoming, so it's a rental property.
I think it should still be in that category, but we can double check with the county on that.
And we can, we can show those separately and while we can add a section that shows apartments and rental. We have some property, or some of our bonders appear to be coming, they do start, do we have like, sometimes you talk about a wraparound or whatever?
We do, yep.
Is that, that's not part of this here?
It is. So you have about five more levies that will include your payments on your existing debt. With respect to question one, on that 10-year structure that we have set up, you would be paying interest only until that existing debt is paid off. And at that time then, your tax rate would decrease. On the, if both questions pass, the way that we have the structure set up now, your rate would go to just slightly under that 16 percent level and stay level over the entire 15-year period. And you would be paying a little bit of principal in those first few years on the second question, if both questions pass, just to keep it to a level rate over the entire 15-year period.
And the capital project levy is just a level amount on all 10 years, so that's not wrapped around with the, with the existing debt or the new debt. It's just a separate flat amount that gets levied each year.
And the way that the capital project levy works, I'm glad you mentioned that, because it's a rate assessed against your tax capacity value. So should your, should your tax base increase, you'd be eligible for a little bit more revenue and you could determine whether you want to levy at an amount that's a little bit higher than $240,000. If your tax base declines, like it has some in the recent past, you would be eligible for a little bit less than $240,000. On the ballot, we're required to say the rate that it's going to, that will be in effect for taxes payable in 2015, but just know that that can go up and down depending upon how your tax base is changing, if it's growing or declining. Your operating referendum is based on a dollar per pupil unit. So that changes, the revenue in that category changes based upon your enrollment. This capital project levy will vary depending upon your, like I said, the growth or decline in your tax base. And each year you'll have the opportunity as part of the levy process to take a look at that and determine whether you want to levy at that amount. But it'll be right around that, you know, assuming your tax base stays relatively stable, you'll be around that $240,000, no matter how many students you have in the district because it's based on a rate times your tax base.
What do you see out there as a fluctuation? With the changes, are you seeing districts, are you seeing that reduce 5 percent or...
Worse. It really varies. In the southwestern part of the state with the ag properties kind of skyrocketing, their tax bases have been increasing pretty rapidly and pretty significantly. We're finally starting to see some of the residential properties across the state, everywhere across the state, starting to gain a little value again. They have been declining for a long time and now they're starting to hold their own a little bit and maybe even increase a little bit. So, but in certain parts of the state, the ag property is, has really been taken off over the last few years.
Any other questions?
And please encourage people to call us if any questions. We definitely want to hear from them if there's any questions or any, anything that they want to talk to us about. We're available as a resource, so encourage people.
Yeah, they'll find that on the website once that's posted.
Yep, we'll have our 800 number, we'll have our email address, so they shouldn't hesitate to contact us and we'll make sure to get back to them just as soon as possible.
If this one passes, what would be our total debt then, for the school system?
So your total debt would be the $9,830,000 plus what you have outstanding, which, I 'm sure you have that with me.
I think it's on, in the, yeah, it's in that review comment, I think.
The existing debt?
I think I have it listed, I think it was there. Because I'm big 16, now I'm reading the other chart on the wraparound.
Oh yes, that's the rate though, I think.
Oh yeah, that is the rate.
Ah, the one above it though, shows the total principal outstanding, I believe. Within a little tiny print.
Principal amounts of...
Thank you.
This is actually clear.
Existing...
Your existing commitments are just under...
Four months, so...
Yeah, just under $5 million and that's principal and interest, so... And you'd be adding the $9.8 million in principal to that.
We can also speak to the resolution if you have questions about any of the paragraphs or sections in the resolution.
So are the resolutions kind of a standard format, fill in the blank?
It is. Again, there's a lot of...
So there's something anything in here special to our district?
No, just a lot of specific information about the projects. So that's the most important thing, I think, that we worked with the body attorney on.
I think the questions are very specific.
They'll be specific.
Right. But all of the deadlines and dates and posting information and when you need to canvas the votes, all of that is set by statute, so... Everybody, all of the other school districts in the state are under the same rules that you are with respect to that if they're holding, if they're presenting questions to their voters on the general election date this year.
In your mind, Bob, this is all set.
Yeah, if we're going to put these on the ballot, this resolution needs to be passed.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution calling an election to authorize issuance of school building bonds and to approve a capital project levy.
I'll second.
And seconded by David. Any further discussion? Public comment? Okay, saying none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a resolution? Yep, so is the roll call.
Helen, aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, next. Review and consider approval of resolution relating to an election of school board members and calling the school district general election.
This is the resolution for putting our candidates on the ballot for the school board meeting. And right now we do have five candidates for that, those positions. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thanks. I'll make the motion to approve. A motion by David. Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Any public comments? And we have another roll call.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Helen? Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Okay, review and consider approval of appropriate food service bids in the following areas. Dairy bids, bakery bids.
Yeah, we just do this every year. Take a look at your agenda. Food service bids for our dairy and bakery products have gone out, various vendors throughout the region. Bimbo Bakeries, USA, that's Berthgrains really, have a little bid for the bakery products. Food Service America has a little bid for the dairy products. I would recommend, yes, later bid for the FSA bakery bid. It is up $225 from last year and the dairy is up $2,994.60 from last year. And I would recommend that we approve those bids. We did take the lowest bid in both cases, Dave, but they're very close.
Okay, a motion by Lou. Second by Deb. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Pass. Review and consider approval of the Elementary School Faculty Handbook for 2014-15 school year.
Let that ask David to come down.
Hello?
Hello there. The faculty handbook? Do you want me to go through the...
You can change through the document.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, do you have this list? These are real basic changes this year, just faculty updates, emergency phone tree and adding Della to the subcalling list and copy room, just made a change in the number of copy rule and then added our outdoor policy to that handbook. So it's really all I have this year. Over the last couple of years, we've changed it, but we've made some significant changes and so this is what we're looking at for this year for the faculty handbook.
I just had a question out of, and I don't know if you have it, but it talks about the crisis response team. The superintendent's kind of down the list at least. Is that how it generally works?
Yeah, I believe...
So there's a response. It goes from you to Dave and Rachel Nelson and the superintendent's the third contact?
Dave Mulchuknals is really the main person on that crisis team. A lot of the times, the times that we've had situations in the last few years that I've been here, Dave is really the first one to know as a school social worker.
And once that takes place, he calls the meeting together typically the next morning if possible to put the committee together to deal with the situation.
It works well with Dave, he has a background in that and he's also a school...
I just found it was an interesting voucher.
Yeah, I would, I would tell you that typically I find out very quickly if anything happens.
Is there ever a crisis where it's immediate, that you need an immediate suspension for something or what do you talk, when you say crisis?
When we say crisis, it could be, maybe somebody was killed in an accident or a family member and maybe they have, there were students affected in the building. We may get together, that's going to be a topic of, of support.
And it could be something that occurs outside the building that doesn't deal with our students per se, other than that it's, there's a relationship with whatever happened with our students.
So it doesn't have to do with like a lockdown or a thing?
No, it's just, it's just a way, it's just, we get together and talk about ways to support people that are affected within our school, whether it's students, families or staff.
The lockdowns are covered in our folders and our crisis for lockdowns and students, those types of things.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody? Any comments from the public? I'll make a motion that we approve the Elementary School Faculty Handbook for 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Second by Kala. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. And you are on next. We're on the elementary, review and consider approval of the Elementary Student Parent Handbook for 2014-15 school year.
Okay, then I'll just go through some of the changes that are put in there. Faculty updates, of course, number two, we added that breakfast is available to all community students at no charge and then also about the free and reduced price meals for lunch and breakfast also being at no charge. Page 15 and 16, we're adjusting our licensed school nurse to fit where we may be in the current school year. Number four, lost and found, we just changed the wording as to where each lost and found area is. Number five, lunch account payment procedures and we added that payments can be online through JMC. Number six, updated lunch breakfast fees. Number seven, outdoor play policy. This was, we had over fifty days of inside recess last year. And so what I did is basically I just did some research on area school districts to see what their policies were and then I went to the National Weather website with their wind chill policies and things like that. And I found that many school districts were staying, they weren't as, we seem to be staying in a lot. And so what I did is adjusted the wording to fit in line with other school districts and what the National Weather Service is recommending. So basically what we had in the past, what we've gone from is, is if the wind chill is between zero and negative ten, that we'll be outside for fifteen minutes. And if it's below that, then we would be inside the entire time. Last year and the, and the years past, it was between zero and negative five. And so we just adjusted the five degrees. It makes a big difference. We do, the paraprofessionals who are doing the first recess will call Paulie at ten forty-five to confirm whether they're going outside or not so that it's only coming from one source and it's coming from Paulie when she looks online at that time. There are a number of times that, that first recess is at eleven, the last recess is at one. Those change and so we, we have a system where they call in at twelve fifteen, I think it is, and then that could change. So there were a number of times where we could have gone outside for at least a partial recess and so this will hopefully alleviate some of that and still keep the students safe. So that, that's a major change in that. Updated school patrol advisor, updated school pictures. And we just added that when someone comes to pick up a student during the school day, that they must come in and sign that person out. I just had a couple of times where I had to go outside and confirm. And so we just wanted to just make it a blanket that they need to come in and sign that student out, so. Any questions about that?
Just, I guess, just a question with lost and found. What do you do with the rolls and stuff after the year is over?
Well, at each conference, we put everything in the main area and it's amazing what-
Definitely.
It's amazing. The day after conferences, after each conference, we wash everything. We bag it and we bring it to the community center and we donate it. So we do that twice a year.
That's what I was thinking you may as well do, but I just wanted.
Any questions?
Comments? Any comments from the public?
I will be approved of the elementary school handbook.
Motion by Cheryl. Second by Kala. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Passed. Review and consider approval of the district paraprofessional handbook for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year.
I would all put that one too.
Yes, this is, this is a handbook I, I put together a few years ago for the first time. And for the elementary and now we've, we adopted it as a district-wide paraprofessional handbook. So there's elementary information, high school information, but a lot of it covers both areas. Changes that we've made is we, faculty changes with the subcalling. Updated other faculty, updated the schedule and key, which is, I don't believe what it was always in there. So we just did, added and updated that. And number four, revised the outdoor policy to reflect what the, the other one says. And we updated the emergency phone tree.
Any questions? Motion by David to approve the paraprofessional handbook for two thousand fourteen fifteen, seconded by Mark. Any public comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Passed. Review and discuss athletic conference.
I'm trying to call if it was June or May and I can't remember what meeting we had discussed some conference stuff when Yellow Medicine East had left our conference. And I had presented to you some information. Some of this stuff is repeat information, but an update. Some of the charts, as you can see, that were previously on there with some potentials aren't on there anymore. Just, just to update you where things are at, on August sixth, we had a district football meeting and our district football includes all the schools that are in our conference, right now the West Central Conference, as well as all of them that are in the Central Minnesota Conference. And I was told at that time that there's a likelihood that Rockford will be leaving the Central Minnesota Conference. In the old information that you had, Rockford was one of the largest, our longest trips in that Central Minnesota Conference. Thus, number one, it would create an opening in their conference and it would decrease the potential transportation for us to be in that conference without Rockford. So that's kind of an update. You can see the one-way mileage difference in the conference. Schools would be ten miles, so that's actually twenty miles per trip, if that makes sense, because of course we drive there, you're going to drive back. So just from a sheer transportation savings or not beyond the school budget, but also to the parents and the fans that would like to go watch these events, that would be shorter trips. You could see the enrollment difference on the schools in the West Central Conference. Average enrollment is about forty, well, forty-three point one students larger than our school currently, where in the West, excuse me, the Central Minnesota Conference, there would be seven point seven students larger. So a very close fit. Just want to be upfront with some of this stuff there. You see dance team and gymnastics has an asterisk because it would be yet to be determined what would happen as far as a conference event for those sports. With that being said, there's still possibilities that there would be scheduling agreements. In our current conference right now, we have teams that aren't in the original list on the left-hand side that participate in many of our conference sports such as like swim and dive and gymnastics for sure are different activities that not all schools have. So some other schools like Holdingford is in our conference for swim and dive and Long Prairie is in our conference for gymnastics because as schools, we want to put together an event for all of those. So there is possibilities for those, but it'd be upfront. With that being said, the Central Minnesota does offer a conference for speech, which we don't currently have. So there's pluses and minuses to that for sure. You can see that there would be a budget impact. This is not taken into account football because that's now going to be scheduled through districts. So one, that's why there's only eight trips for the fall because it would just be volleyball and one cross-country meet that would be impacted by that twenty miles of trip, if you understand. You can see obviously the closer you are, the potential that you have for larger crowds, not only for our teams when they're on the road, but also for our gates when we're playing at them, for the opponents coming here. It, it seems to be a natural better fit for all of our students except for in two cases like I mentioned and that is still up in the air. Generally, it's who we play in our seventh and eighth grade sports because of travel to begin with. If we went to Melrose or, excuse me, Montevideo and Morris to play some of our seventh and eighth grade sports, they won't be getting home until later and so we just don't compete with them. And of course, when we get into the spring, we wouldn't have to release from school as much to drive to Belgrade to play baseball as opposed to driving to Montevideo. Just some examples. You can see I put, put some notes down there, one, two, three, four, just to make sure that I talked to you really about them. But obviously I understand that there would be some positives and some negatives to this. But number two, there is some discussions even within our current West Central Conference as, as to what's going to happen and would schools leave? Right now there's nine schools and it's not really advantageous from a scheduling standpoint because there's always an odd team out when you're trying to make a conference-wide schedule. So it's not that our, not that staying in our conference is a stable thing. There's been conference changes every year that I've been here in our conference. So the thing is, is if something happens with our conference, we certainly don't want to be in a position where we don't have a conference. Number one, it does give our student athletes an opportunity to earn all conference, both academically and as an athlete. Obviously our teams to win conference championships. But also it gives them an opportunity to participate in sports that are administered effectively. If I as an AD had to go out and find all non-conference games, we might play basketball games on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, one week and not play at all the next week. Quite frankly, because I have to find teams that would have openings, who would have other conference obligations, if that makes sense. Also, we might be on the road eighteen of our twenty-four games because people might, and it could be all over the place. So certainly, I don't think that our conference is about to implode or anything like that, but we just want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we don't have a conference. The other thing is, we might know, or we might have to act as a board as soon as August twenty-sixth if, if we are going to go to the Central Minnesota Conference. On August twentieth at twelve PM, the Central Minnesota Conference athletic directors will all be meeting. And at three PM, the West Central Conference athletic directors will be as well in separate meetings. But at that time, I'm told that, that the athletic directors and the schools from the Central Minnesota Conference would have a clear, a clear idea if Rockford is in or out. And that would obviously, if, if they knew that by three o'clock, that would allow me to have discussions with our current conference at that three o'clock meeting to see what's going to take place. Now, if there is only seven teams in the Central Minnesota Conference, they're going to want to fill that spot. So I am told that their number one school of choice would be Painesville. And so, but they would want to know, obviously they want to have a full conference too. In my opinion, I think that if this is something that we were going to do as a school, which I think is definitely something worth exploring and we would certainly have all the information at the time of making a decision. But I think that it would, I think that it should be contingent on a unanimous approval by all of the schools within that conference, meaning Belgrade, Indian Valley, Holdingford, Howard Lake. I've not been around years, but, but now in five years and seeing all these changes, I would hate for us to make a move to a conference and find out that there was one or two schools that's not happy that we're coming in so that they are now going to go somewhere else and we start at square one. If that, if that makes sense. Or if we're in turmoil and constant change, then let's stay in that as opposed to go somewhere else and get our communities acclimated to different places and then that's going to be falling apart too. So there's a, before I ask you guys if you have any questions, there's a chance that we would be coming on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth at that next school board meeting to ask for the school board. And the way that I understand the process with the Central Minnesota schools is that each school would get a vote through their athletic director or superintendent on whether or not they would allow us in. But I would like to be able to go to them as athletic director and activities director and superintendent saying that our school board has been, has authorized to do this so that they understand that we're out, that you guys are behind and our community is behind it. And just as a reminder, before I presented the information the very first time, we did, did meet with the coaches and, and discussed this with all the programs and what the potential impact is there. Again, all of this might just be no information because Rockford might stay where they're at, but I, I just don't think that we could afford to either A, miss out on an opportunity or B, I didn't want to come here and present this to you on August twenty-sixth and ask you guys to make a decision without having a chance to either think about it, ask questions throughout the next two weeks of me or ask people, what do you, what would you think about driving to these communities as opposed to these and, and see what, what you feel like the community would get? Do you guys have any questions for me regarding this?
You had made a comment about you had meetings with the coaches.
Mm-hmm.
You, you didn't completely say one hundred percent, if they were one hundred percent aboard with it or not?
Well, I don't want to speak for them at all. There was not a, a sense of, number one, not every coach made it to that meeting, but I have communicated with them even through that meeting around an individual basis. There was nobody that was adamantly opposed to this. If I can use an example, like for instance gymnastics, okay? Gymnastics looks at the conference that they're in and we're in with Melrose, which is a perennial gymnastics program across the state. And so they look at it as that meet isn't really super great for, for us. It's good, I mean, so there's potentials there and, and there are some other meets. Gymnastics is an interesting sport in and of itself because there isn't a ton of schools that have it. So they want to compete with the schools that have it. It's not like basketball that, every school, even if they're really small, can find five people to go out there and play. And so, and then, and the dance team kind of on the same line. Yellow Medicine East is a perennial dance school that does very good in the state tournament, won one of the classifications last year. And we've not thrived at the conference level with that program either. And not that we can't, can't or won't get there, but there, some of it is just unknown because we very well may go back to those, to the, to that conference, the West Central Conference and ask that we can be members for those sports. Schools do that right now. So, so I would say that those two sports would potentially be the ones that were, just because it's unknown, but it wasn't just like a, you can't do this to our program mentality. And, and you know, the other ones, there's benefits and drawbacks. And when you look at it from a, if you ask a coach, their number one priority is going to be from a competitive standpoint. They're looking at it as to what conference do I think I can do the best in and that's up and down. You know, the conference that we're in currently right now, you know, you have, and wrestling is probably tougher. If you go to the other Central Minnesota Conference, they have a state champion boys' basketball team. It's, it's going to, and a school's our size and the kids that are coming through, it's going to be across the board, one hand over here, and the other hand, different programs.
Would it start in fifteen, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah, it would be for the fall of two thousand fifteen and I guess that's a good question. That's why the sense of urgency because we would have to let the, the West Central Conference know a year in advance and Rockford would be leaving, Central Minnesota would want to fill their fall of two thousand fifteen schedule. They would want to bring somebody into their conference. And so we would have to let our conference know that. And, and at the same time, we don't want to let our conference know we're leaving if we're not in another conference and then.
How about baseball? It seems like the ninth graders have tough times scheduling games in baseball.
Well, right now ACGC Benson and Bull don't have ninth grade teams. Minnewaska does, Melrose does, Montevideo does not. Morris does and Sock Center does not.
But they have.
Yeah, and Maple Lake, Maple Lake does because we played them, Pierce does. The thing, the thing about ninth grade baseball in and of itself is because of the strength of our baseball program, we do have very good numbers and in this region, we don't have an issue with other teams scheduling us ninth grade games minus the spring weather that we've had lately. But we host a ninth grade tournament to bring some teams in and we had trouble with our facilities this year, obviously doing that, but we have two fields next to each other. Basically, the weather hindered our ninth grade baseball schedule more and-
Should be able to fill in some games.
We would, obviously, it would be extra work because it wouldn't be as easy to just say we're playing these three games on this night. But you know, I don't really foresee, for instance, Minnewaska, we played an extra ninth grade game last year, as did we with Melrose, and I, I don't see that going away because they want those games for their pro- and I, I don't see that going away because they want those games for their program to say go. And as far as the varsity, varsity-level sports, that's probably the one level that, in the conference. But if you, if you look back the last few years, our ninth-grade baseball team hasn't had a ton of conference games, just, let's face it, most of the teams that have ninth-grade baseball left the West Central Conference and went to the Granite Ridge and Albany and St. Cloud Cathedral, and some of those larger schools all had.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, number ten. Review and consider approval on the high school, middle school faculty handbook for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year.
And I'll adjust that, you have sheets on the changes, all of those. Lori did not attend because of family commitments that we will take. Uh, the changes really are for page two and three, changes to the day syllabus had to be found, um, found online in September fifth. It's just been moved ahead, so it'll be online longer by the staff. So there will be more opportunities to see the class syllabus. She's also added the scale of the rubric that needs to be posted along with the student-friendly standards. Students are learning in the classroom. Last year, they spent a lot of time on the, the, the friendly standards, student-friendly standards, changing the language and all that. Now they've added the rubric that goes along with those. Uh, last year, they were requiring the standards. They added all staffs to be expected to wear the I D.'s to, to the handbook. That was added last year. They also added expectations that the bullying policy will be gone over the first two days of, of school and, and advisory classes. Now, certainly, that's gonna be an expectation that we expect to want more than that, but she wanted to put in the handbook so that it was enough time for them to go over the bullying policy. And do it thoroughly. Also, J M C is going online this year, so we added information about that. Teachers will be able to grade online, a lot of different things online, and they will be beneficial to that. So they want to grade in that, and put in J M C, they should be able to do that. Uh, they've also added information about the new copiers. We're going to Metro to use, to work with our copiers this year, so we'll be doing a lease program with them. And we're also moving to a decentralized piece where the teacher will start to use alone copy themselves. We reduce Dela's hours by just one. She'll still be there, but the change was that they require thirty-six hours instead of twenty-four. What that means is that if they want Dela to do it, they need to give her more time because there's less time than she has. Otherwise, the teachers won't be trained to use all of our older copiers. We will be able to walk the machines and print their work. Added more detail, outlined locker room and study hall supervision expectations. So she adjusted that. Also changed opening to homeroom, timed to two days instead of one. Again, that's to make sure that they have time to go over the bullying policy and that it's not rushed, and to provide time for home, um, homecoming information along with every year review of the student handbook. So it just, she added nothing in order for the advisory school through that. Also added Dela's information, if the board agrees to hire her today for our subcalling. So that information was put in there, she was our only candidate for that position, and that will be in personnel. Uh, and they also added Max to the tardy procedures as part of the student management. And so if there's issues, you go there, Max's name is in there, and then that at the top of the board, and Max toward Dela. So those are the main changes to the handbook. Handbook has been helped with the ties, made rules, refined things.
I would motion approve the faculty handbook for two thousand fourteen, fifteen for the high school, middle school. Second. Second by Deb. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? If none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, now we're on personnel. Um, review and consider approval of resignation request from Robert Aaron Van Derby, effective immediately. Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Review and consider approval of resignation request from Sherri Nelson, paraprofessional, effective immediately. A motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Passed. Review and consider approval of hiring Lori Neppson, current food service worker for the secondary head cook position, vacated by Betty Seaman, effective immediately.
Uh, the board remembers I did open the position. We didn't get a whole lot of applicants, so I reopened the position. We did get six applicants that time. I did ask all six to interview. Two of them declined for various reasons, so we did interview four, and the committee did bill that Lori do an outstanding job with this. This, the board chooses to approve this, it will certainly cause possibly some new openings. And some of the very people that applied for the head cook position could apply for this or one of our current employees could also apply for Lori's position that will be vacated.
So... A motion by David.
Second.
Second by Kella. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Passed. Review and consider approval of hiring Dela Anderson for the one-hour-per-day subcalling position at ten dollars per hour, effective September second, two thousand fourteen.
We did raise fifty cents. We've done some over-under calls, so it was nine fifty, and we didn't get a lot of applicants, applicants for this. Also, we did, we did look at other possibilities for this. There are some automated, um, subcalling services that we looked at. In, in the end, it's most cost-effective to do it the way we're doing it.
So, a motion by Mark. Second by Kella. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Passed. Okay, review and consider approval of hiring Kim Jones as an E S Y teacher for July seventh, eighth, ninth, and August eighteenth, nineteenth, and twenty-ninth.
But this doesn't work. This is where I'm, we apologize to the board, we did miss this. Um, as you can notice, that we're hiring after, she's already worked a little bit on this one. It's just one that we missed. Again, we certainly apologize to the board, we'll let you know this on this.
A motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Passed. Review and consider approval of maternity leave for Jessica Pence from approximately November tenth, two thousand fourteen, through January second, two thousand fifteen. A motion by Cheryl.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Review and consider approval of changing Amy Jo Gabey's assignment from point eight-two-eight F T E to point eight-five-seven F T E.
That particular piece, there's no change in the assignment. When we calculated the time, when that was calculated, there was a supervised, or E S L time there that was calculated as a supervisory time. It's not a superv, supervisory time, it should have been calculated as a class time. So it's a correction to the F Ts that we approved earlier when we reduced her particular F T.
A motion by Cheryl.
Second.
Second by David. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Passed. Number eight, review and consider approval of resignation of Helen Sunroll, uh, food service worker, effective immediately. A motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Deb. Further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Review and consider approval to move Amy Ruffey, paraprofessional, from six-point-five hours per day for four days a week to six-point-five hours a day for five days a week, effective September second, two thousand fourteen.
As I mentioned, it tends to be skidamaros. This is one of our dominos from an earlier resignation that we filled by an internal, which causes another domino to fall, and we're just moving down. Once we approve this, I would assume we're eventually gonna come back to the board with another piece because of her being in this position. Because it will vacate her six-point-five, uh, per day, four days a week position.
So, a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Review and consider approval to hire Christine Schultz-Pierce-Ben? Is that pronounced correctly?
I think that's right.
Um, as site supervisor for the P A W S program, effective August eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
As a reminder, the board, the PAWS program is our daycare program for school-aged students. So she'll be supervising that particular program. We'll be coming back to the board eventually with some more help that she'll need, but she'll be the site supervisor.
So, a motion by David. Second by Mark for this. Um, any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, we are now on informational reports. So we have elementary support first. David. They can do like the angels, "Come on down, huh?"
Get up and down. Okay, um, not a whole lot to report. We're just getting ready for the fall workshops and open house. We have some great things that we've done around the elementary school. We put in five new trees in the front, and they look really good. And we painted the lines in the gym, the, around the basketball court lines, and that hasn't been done in a while. The red was starting to show through, we painted black many years ago, so we went over those again, and it looks fantastic. We've added a couple drinking fountains. Uh, we made a change. Students are allowed to bring water bottles to school. And if you are out in the, especially the fourth and fifth grade area when they're trying to fill them up with the drinking fountain, and then we put in new drinking fountains with, it has the bottle filler, and it has a sensor, and it fills the bottle really fast. And then it has a digital readout that lets us know how many plastic bottles we are saving by reusing their bottles. We'll have one in each wing. Uh, one is, they're both installed, the electric is put in one. They're still working on the other one. So those, I think that will be a really neat addition for us over there. We're pretty much done with all of the other projects. We've tiled a couple rooms and did some painting and some things like that. So otherwise, I don't have a whole lot. We're just getting ready for the new school year. It looks like our, Polly thought that we were above about seven students at the elementary so far this year. And so I think that's excellent. Things can change over the next couple of weeks, but that's what we're looking at right now, so.
Good.
Any questions?
Yeah, um, the public, we had a lady that spoke about the doors, locking the doors and stuff and that whole process of entry in the building at the elementary. Is anything changing with that, or what's the policy, or why doors are locked and so on and so forth?
Well, at eight, at eight-thirty, all the doors are locked in the, at the elementary.
Okay.
Except for the front door.
And the front door is by Polly?
Yes.
Okay.
So people will be expected to come in to visit with Polly and check out with Polly that, when they leave, that card due?
During the school day, yes.
Okay.
And even visitors who come to the district office have to come through the front door and they'll check in with Polly, go down to the district office.
No, there's some, there's, I mean, if I'm a new person not walking into your building, I'd want to know doing that. Is there signage or something?
There, there's signage on all the doors that, hey, must check into the office.
Okay.
Two is the committee education report.
And Lori will be up next, working to...
Good evening. Been a very busy summer. We've had excellent participation through our summer programs. Uh, but we're quickly transitioning to our fall. Our fall brochure is, uh, to the press this Thursday. Uh, tomorrow, we do a full-day training. Uh, we just purchased a new software program for our online registration, our school-age childcare program, and our facility scheduling. Uh, we did that to make it easier. We're all on the same system now, and then to go with the online one to home, too. So we're kind of a one software program for that. So we have training for that. A PAWS update. Uh, we are in the process of a full remodel of room one fifty-nine. It's to make a different feel and a different program for, for that, not feel as much like school. Uh, as you saw tonight, we're busy hiring staff. We're still trying to fill those positions, um, finalizing all handbooks and processes. And we currently have over thirty-seven kids in our program. So it's crunch time for us now to get ready for the second, September second, the first day of school. So we're excited about it, but there's a lot that still needs to be done. Any questions?
How many children can you handle in the PAWS program?
Uh, we will, we will take up to fifty kids, and that's where, that's the benefit we have with having multiple locations. We would never have them all in that room, but we would utilize gyms and different areas of the building. So we anticipate that we'll have, at least starting off with twenty kids. Thirty-seven are, some are part-time, some are drop-ins, some are full-time. So we, we feel that we will be growing throughout the year, so.
Is there a program that they could be doing, or activities?
Yeah, there will be a lot of different stations and opportunities, very active. Uh, we'll be outdoor, we'll be utilizing computer labs, we'll be doing different crafts, and, yep, the time will break fast.
Is that kind of listed so parents can see what's going on, like, on the web somewhere, that you could go to the PAWS and see the activities that...
Yeah, there'll be an activity calendar. Uh, we just hired the site leader today, tonight. Um, so, but there'll be an activity calendar, and then there are also four days a week, there's mandatory homework time of twenty minutes, um, through that three hours. So, yeah, that'll be communicated to the, to the parents of what kind of that schedule is. There'll be a lot of, we envision a lot of choices for kids.
Right. Because even as a parent, that, if you're looking at something and say, oh, this will be kind of fun this week, that they're playing, or just for your child, could...
Right, exactly, just for that week, for something different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we anticipate a lot of that with our non-school days, um, where, to give kids an opportunity to, you know, to do something different on those with enrichment activities.
People pay per hour, or they...
Uh, they pay, there's different choices. There's either your full-time, which is one to three days of care per week, or, I'm sorry, part-time. Full-time is four to five, so that'd be your contract. Or there's a, um, kind of a drop-in or less, where you're not signing up for the whole year. And you could do just non-school days, or you could do any of those.
So what does that mean, just for a drop-in? Do you have that on your...
Uh, I think it's, uh, for after-school, I believe it's ten dollars. It's higher than if you're, yeah, ten dollars for those three hours. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds good. Next. Activity director, report.
It's pretty big one, though. If you notice that, uh, we have a three-quarters of a painted tower out down by the track, a football field, volunteer labor, actually, a bunch of high school football players. We're excited about getting the goalpost painted, so they wanted to get that tower painted, and...
The goalpost looked excellent.
Thank you.
Really cool.
So, uh, but actually, the goalpost took less than a gallon of paint, believe it or not. When it was all said and done, it was kind of embarrassing that, that's how it had always been with, when it was a gallon of paint. But it takes something to get up there, and thankfully, because of the baseball project, we have equipment all over here right now, and people are saying, go ahead, use it. So use the lift to be able to go up to get the tower, too. So we're really trying to take advantage of that. Um, as far as our facilities go, our well pump did go out for our irrigation systems. We had to get that replaced, um, and that was not really the greatest timing because we had such a wet spring, it wet early summer, and then when it got dry, then that went out. Uh, but we're up and running, so we're good. As far as, um, the fall sports numbers that we have, um, right now, our activities that are going on, we have seventh through twelfth grade cross-country started on Monday. going on, we have seventh through twelfth grade cross country started on Monday, and ninth through twelve volleyball, and then tenth through twelve football, and the ninth grade football will start on this coming Monday. In cross country, we have fourteen students out seventh through twelve, which is up from the year ago, in volleyball, ninth through twelve, we have thirty-nine students, and in football, tenth through twelve, we have forty-eight. And what I, what I will do, again, like I always have it, is get a spreadsheet, we'll be meeting as conference schools on the twentieth, and we'll try and get information from all the schools, just so you guys can be aware of what our participation numbers are as, in comparison to the other schools. Otherwise, this is a new year for coaches' education stuff, so all coaches that are coaching, they'll be on the varsity bench, will need to take some continuing education classes through the state high school league, which are free, but something that's required of them, so something that I, of course, have to monitor then, and this is the year that that stuff is to be renewed, so just in the midst of making sure that our fall coaches have that done for their first game. Of course, we remind us some office personnel, right, and also the paperwork stuff is, or at baseball, we gotta make sure that everybody gets all their stuff in for liability purposes and stuff like that. Does anybody have any questions?
What was the comment on the ninth grade football?
I don't have an official number yet, because the ninth graders won't start until Monday, so, I, I don't know if we had eighteen or nineteen kids or something like that in the spring, sign up that they were gonna be coming out, so, as far as our tenth through twelfth grade football equipment, our storehouse is pretty empty, so.
Thank you. Okay, facility and equipment meeting.
I have no idea.
That's really, when we have the facilities decided on the two questions.
Not to be the one, I thought we already discussed that.
Yeah, except, you gotta remember, we only have one meeting in July.
Yes. So, thought we already took care of everything that, at the last board meeting, it was the facilities meeting, and, so, there's really not much to say.
We have a meeting scheduled, so I'm gonna make sure that we have it on here.
So number five is administrative negotiations, it has my name on it, and we are pretty well set there, we have one of our administrators that's taking all the other things he thinks are more important than finishing this, so we hope to have a plan in a couple of weeks, but his priorities aren't there, so he's doing everything else. So, I appreciate that, but if we're gonna...
Number priorities in there, plus I do have an event this weekend, so that...
Good for you. Okay, policy committee report, Cheryl.
We had a couple of policy committee meetings, and we've been discussing the bullying policy, and most of it's pretty much stuck in statute, so I think we're gonna be bringing it to the next meeting.
Yeah, what I have done is, I put my book on all this stuff in here, I did give you all a copy, who have, are not part of the policy committee, I also put some up there, and what is highlighted in the dark are the new, we run off with the Bible policy from MFA, or our current policy. What is in the dark are the changes to the newest Bible policy, so we are going to put this on agenda for next week, so I have to give you some homework, make sure that, or for the next agenda meeting, for board meeting, so just make sure that you take a look at it, there's quite a bit of changes for, as far as training, that kind of stuff, and it will be on the board agenda, next board agenda for the first reading, so I just have given it to anybody from the public that wants it, and also the board members who are not part of the facilities committee, or the policy committee.
Anything else, Cheryl? Then we'll move right to...
Just a few things, we're still waiting for Charles Groles for the transportation report, so that we tend to negotiate with the transportation company, until I get that report, I'm just not willing to negotiate until I know where we sit, so we're waiting for that, there's been some difficulties getting hold of each other, and so there's been some phone tape and that kind of stuff, and some last information, so I am expecting to get that information very quick, my only concern is that I might get it while my event's going on, so we'll have to see what we can do about getting that going as quick as we can, once that's done. My assumption is that we'll go by the old contract until the new contract is taken care of, but again, until I get that report, I'm just not gonna go negotiations, that's at least my recommendation of the board. Okay, starting the school year, it's coming quick, I just can't believe that we're hit August at this particular point, we just completed registration nights, at day, things that seemed to went real well, when I mentioned the fact that we were going to have a new system that would allow them to pay for lunches over the internet by, by credit card, I can tell you that there were high fives, that's all I can say, so I think the community is looking, the parents are looking forward to being able to have that option, and we'll certainly unroll, unroll that, I believe, at the start of the school year, when we get things out.
Food service will be doing their training here soon, they're coordinating with them, so.
So I think that'll be a great thing. Lunch counts, one of the things I'll bring back, I'd like to gather some chat, is that there's been discussion about where we should officially post our school board, so I want the board to be aware that we will come up with a discussion and a decision, right now we currently post just on the web, or our bulletin board in our main office, and there's certainly been some discussion about whether we should post that on the website as official site too, so we'll be aware that that's coming, and I'd like to gather some information on, also, not that that should be a determining factor for the board, but it's always good to have information. In-service for teachers starts the twenty-sixth, and the twenty-seventh, and the twenty-eighth, there's continental breakfast for them on August twenty-sixth, at seven forty-five High School Cafeteria, I'd certainly invite all of the school board members to get there if they can, I think that'd be a great thing, and also, we are gonna have a speaker come in that day, it's Mark Sheronbrook, who wrote Nice Bite, if you haven't read that book, it's really, it's an easy read, and it's really a good book, and he'll be talking to the staff, I would also invite the board to that, I think you'll enjoy that, that talk.
August twenty-sixth.
It'll be August twenty-sixth, I think, at eight fifteen to nine thirty. If you know where that's at, I forgot, to the auditorium, in the auditorium. Open house is from five to seven thirty on August twenty-seventh, and as mentioned by the policy committee, we're certainly working on the bully, bully policy, bring it up to date with the new state statutes. That's all I have.
Okay, anything else from the board? And then a question to the board? Motion by Lou. Second by Cheryl. All in favor say aye.
Aye.